Want to come and schedule on campus your training session?
Okay, but if you want to.
They sent you the link.
You built that email in?
Yeah, they already should have finished. It says here it's coming. Know before, that's the email that you should be looking for. That has the link. Know before.
Thank you. So we're gonna have to check our emails. But I mean, I mean, it's like no matter.
Good afternoon, board members, college staff and guests. The time is 6:01 on this, the seventh day of December 2021, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. May I have Mr. Delgado say the prayer and then Judge Martinez, the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for all of our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make the decisions that are for the good of all those and guard us from blind self-interest. Grant us the humility to seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Ramos, could you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J.D. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Mahrez? Absent. Mercurio Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Escarranza?
Present.
Esteban Rangel?
Is on the phone.
He's on the phone.
Present.
Karina Elizondo?
Present.
Tita Cantubella? Absent at the moment. And Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Next item that we have, we have public testimony. We do have six participants that have signed up for public speaking. I will go ahead and read the rules. An individual comment to the board shall not exceed three minutes per meeting. When there are six or less speakers scheduled, the board president may extend each speaker's time to five minutes. Time may not be ceded from one speaker to another. The board president may also limit the total amount of time for public testimony, but not to less than 30 minutes. The speaker may not speak on personnel or student matters that refer to individuals by name or title. After a speaker's comments, the board president shall make whatever response, if any, or take whatever action. If any is deemed appropriate to handle the matter, such response or action may include the following: referring the matter to the college president for action or for further recommendations; referring the matter to a later meeting or to a board committee for further discussion or study; indicating that the matter shall be taken under advisement. If the board president determines that a person has not attempted to resolve a matter administratively, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy for attempted resolution before bringing the matter to the board. Thank you. The first person that I have is Dr. Hillary Gleason. And you have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello. For the record, I'm Dr. Hillary Gleason, the Chair of the Social and Behavioral Sciences Department. I am here to speak against reinstating the athletic program. Quite frankly, we do not have the resources that we need to serve our current students. For example, at the beginning of the semester, I had several faculty members whose office computers were so old they would not boot up. It took IT over a week to find another old computer to put in their office. So how can you tell me that we should prioritize paying $250,000 a year for a soccer program when my professors can't answer student emails? We are an institution of higher learning, and there is no degree in soccer at LC. I put in a request to hire a new psychology full-time professor. I was told there was no funding available right now. We have five full-time professors, four on main, one at south. Our contractual load is five classes. The ISDs next semester alone requested 20 classes. We are severely understaffed and stressed out. How can you justify spending $200,000 a year on baseball? We are an institution of higher learning, and there is no degree in baseball at Laredo College. We have been encouraged, especially during COVID, to offer classes in a variety of modalities and to be flexible with students and their schedules. Online testing has been encouraged and in online classes required. To prevent cheating, we use a program called Respondus, which almost is universally despised by the faculty. It is nearly impossible to detect cheating. Even I have graded exams where something was copied verbatim from Wikipedia. Respondus caught nothing. Additionally, Respondus is incompatible with most of the Chromebooks that are used on our school districts, so our dual students can't even take their exams using Canvas and Respondus. We have been begging the administration for years for different software, but we're always told that $200,000 a year was too expensive. I guess the integrity of our degrees isn't an institutional priorities. So how can you tell me that we should spend $240,000 a year on a tennis program? We are an institution of higher learning, and there is no degree in tennis at Laredo College. Finally, I am angry, angry, at how we are treating our coaches. They are wonderful people who have dedicated, in some cases, over 20 years to this college, and they deserve better than being strung along. I urge this board to treat them fairly. Perhaps move them to the continuing ed side and open it up to the community. I would love to learn how to play tennis without a country club membership. My kids would love to take a two-week soccer camp. I think that would be an amazing revenue generator for the college. If that is not possible, I urge the board to give them a generous severance package and allow them to explore other opportunities. I know that politically, this is a difficult decision, and that powerful people in the community are advocating for the return. But institutionally, this is not a difficult call. We don't have the money to support existing students, and students overwhelmingly do not want to pay for the program. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Gleason. The next person I have is Kristi Lansford. You have three minutes, please.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, administration, faculty, and colleagues. For the record, I am Kristi Lansford, the head softball coach at LC, and I'm currently assigned to HSOC. It is safe to say that one of my best qualities and worst qualities are exactly the same. I have an insatiable thirst for an answer to the question why, and I have an insatiable thirst for the answer to the question why. Because of that, in the past six months, I have watched the videos, listened to recordings, taken notes, and re-watched all board athletic, board and athletic ad hoc committee meetings that have occurred in 2021. With that in mind, I would like to thank the Chair, Ms. Levin Ramos, Ms. Mahrez, Ms. Elizondo, Mr. Rangel, and all other members of the ad hoc committee for their dedication, hours of research, and meaningful and significant discussion in trying to find a solution with the limited budget and statistical information you were provided. Although I don't know what led to the deviation from the ad hoc committee recommendations to the decisions and actions on April 29th and May 10th, I know that the work of the committee was completed with due diligence and in the best interest of all stakeholders. Now, just briefly, there are two things I learned from my college coach. I learned more than that, but two things that are applicable to this. As I was walking out of my head coach's office to take my first head coaching job in 1999, she said, "Be careful. I know why you coach, and the higher level you get, the less you're going to like it because it becomes less about the kids and more about politics." As much as I hated to admit it, she was right. I did that, although I spent eight amazing years at the NCAA Division II level. I hated Division I. Another thing she said, "It would have been interesting to see where you would have played if you would have grown up in a different place and a different time." My high school didn't have a softball team until my senior year, and my coach was a professional bowler. Softball leagues for young kids didn't exist, and baseball wasn't an option because they sent me home from signups for being a girl. The story of my journey from being that kid to a 17-year-old college freshman with a whopping 1.55 GPA with no clue to a 29-year-old, three-time All-American collegiate student, All-American collegiate student athlete. Sorry, let me rephrase that. Academic All-American collegiate student athlete to becoming a college coach far exceeds the time limitations of what I want to convey. As a coach, I've always had a very specific role for myself. If I ever get to the point where I forget what it's like to be them, it's time to walk away. It's time to walk. If I forget what it's like to be them, it's time for me to walk away. And how does that relate to Laredo College and local athletes? I agree with everything about local athletes. It has always been my vision to fill our teams with local athletes. It takes time. It takes time. And I've, in 20 years of recruiting, when I, I didn't know what to expect when I came to Laredo. I didn't know what to expect. But what I found, I found was this tight-knit community with passion and love for the game of softball. But they're about 20 years behind in being prepared to play at the college level. But bigger than being prepared, what they needed was coaching. So how does that relate to education? How do you become a coach? When I first got here, there was one high school coach who had collegiate fast pitch experience. We now have one. We have an alumni at LBJ, coaching at LBJ. We have one at United South. We have one at San Diego High School. We have one at United. That's the goal, is to filter them in, give them that softball-specific knowledge, and they have to have advanced degrees to coach. They have to have their bachelor's. And if you want to coach in college, you have to have your master's. So it's to reach those goals so they can go back to the community. Because I know, as a person who recruited at four-year institutions, I know coaches aren't coming to Laredo to recruit these kids. And the only way, they have the talent and they have the potential, but the only way, we have to prepare them. We have to get them to the coaches. In my entire 20 years of recruiting at the four-year level, I recruited from high schools. I went to two high school games, two. Everything is travel ball. We have, the community needs this. They love the game. They need it, but they have to have the coaches. And this, and if they don't play, if they don't have the opportunity to play, they don't have the opportunity to teach. Okay? Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lansford. The next speaker we have is Mr. Cash Manson-Khaney.
For the record, my name is Prakash Manson-Khaney. I'm an associate professor here at the college in the area of government. I just wanted to state for the record that today I come to speak on my own behalf, not on the behalf of the faculty. That's public testimony. I'm also a taxpayer and a resident and a proud citizen of, resident of Laredo, born and raised here. I just want to make some quick comments on item 4A. Now, I've been at Laredo College since the turn of the millennia, meaning since 2000. I got my associate's degree here, and then I had my first job here as a tutor, and then I also have my instructional job here as well. One of the things we hear a lot as faculty senate leaders is that we cannot afford it, right? We hear that a lot when we talk about salary increases. We hear it when we talk about hiring new faculty. And for me, for many years, this sounded like an excuse. But as I've become more involved in the business of managing this college's affairs, being involved in the budget committee, being involved in the leadership meeting, being involved in the president's meetings, whatever that might be over the years, I've come to realize that it's not an excuse, but a reality, that we can't always afford something. And as a result, we have to set our priorities accordingly. And this is going to be a tough decision, but it has to be done. The reality is, is that COVID-19 has had and continues to have a major impact on instruction and on the way that students learn. The fact remains that students learn differently today. Shifting our priorities to meet these new demands is going to take training. Training on technology, training on teaching, on how to teach in these new modalities, whether they be hybrid, online, face-to-face, or how we now teach Du and Roman through Zoom. It's going to take training, and that training is going to take resources, and those resources are going to take money. Students have been emotionally and intellectually altered by the pandemic, and it's going to take a major effort to meet the needs of these new learners. And that's also going to take a major financial commitment. Today, we have nearly 10,000 students, of which nearly half or so of them are traditionally enrolled. I can tell you today, not just as a faculty member, but as someone who's worked in almost every area of the college, almost, we are woefully unprepared today to meet their advising, financial aid, and technology needs. We are just simply unprepared. We need more staff. We need more resources to do this. And we cannot meet all of the needs for our current student body with the resources that we have. Now, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying that we don't do it every year. We somehow do it, which is nothing short of a miracle, on how we meet the needs of our students today. But we need dedicated advisors who can lead these students through the challenges of transferring to a university or selecting the right courses for the degree here at Laredo College. The current ratio for an advisor to student is 1 to 870, so nearly one per 1,000 students, one advisor. This is supposed to be closer to 1 in 300. And I'll finish by saying, nearly 30 of the 50 colleges in Texas have no athletic programs today, not because they don't want one or because they don't want to deny these amazing students an opportunity to play, but rather because they have a mission to protect. 95% of our students rely on financial aid, and 100% of them demand, rely on advising and advisors. These are the priorities that we need to have at this college. This isn't about politics or outside pressures. It's about what it takes to keep this college afloat for generations to come. I learned here, and I want many, many more generations to be able to come here and learn. But we cannot do that unless we have the resources. And we cannot have the resources unless we make the tough decisions. So I speak on behalf of myself today on these comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Manson-Khaney. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Tita Vela and Mr. Esteban Rangel are present.
Thank you.
Next person I have is Maria Castro. I might not be pronouncing her name. Oh, there she is. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Maria Castro, and I am a proud LC alumni, and I am a current middle school coach here for Laredo, Texas. To begin, I would like to start off by thanking my college coaches, Kristi Lansford and Casey Graham, I'm sorry. These two women have done great things here for this city. They're fighting for the future generations to come. It amazes me to see the drive and determination that my coaches have because it is what is expected as a leader, to fight for what is right. Leaders create leaders, and that's why I am here today. Tenacity. This is a term that I learned one day before infield practice. Coach said, "We must have tenacity." And she passed out a Sharpie, and she made us write it in our gloves to remind ourselves of our purpose. What is tenacity? Not easily stopped or pulled apart? Firm or strong? Persistence? Very determined to do something? So I am here today to tell you what my coach, Kristi Lansford, once told me, and that is that we must be tenacious. Laredo, we have to be tenacious. Why not Laredo? This is a question that I asked myself when I received a call to play for Laredo College. It starts here. Playing for Laredo College changed my life. After playing for Laredo College alongside a lot of other great talented athletes from Laredo, nearby cities, and out of state gave me the opportunity to grow as an individual. It has been one of the greatest experiences of my life. We grew together. We became a family with one goal: success. Many people think sports are a waste of time and money. Well, I'm here to tell you that it is far more than that. It is needed. It is needed time. It is an investment to our city. Laredo softball has created many opportunities for a lot of us. To name a few from Team 1 and 2 that I had the pleasure of playing with and continuing our education are: Miranda Beltran, physical therapist assistant; Ali Sanchez, United High School volleyball, softball coach; Leah Teniente, United South High School volleyball coach; Alejandra Zerda, United South Middle School volleyball and basketball coach; Karina Moreno, coaching at Sam Houston in Garland, Texas; myself, coaching volleyball, basketball, and track for Salvador Garcia Middle School; and my bestie, Aviana Galván, shortstop. She is soon to become a doctor. At the team, and the teams, after these two are on the verge of graduation, Laredo College athletics is not a want. It is a need. It gave us the opportunity to become successful assets to our community while giving us the experience of a lifetime. We are responsible for bettering the city to be able to compete with others around the world. So I repeat, why not Laredo? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. The next person I have is Alan Cantu.
Good evening, Madam President. Board members and everyone, everyone present. Alan Cantu, for the record. I stand before you today as a representative of the student body and as a student myself to express where we stand concerning the topic of athletics. I want to begin by sharing the results of the two surveys that were passed on November 17, 2021. In the Don't Bring Back Athletics Group survey, it was made clear that students will not pay an increase in fees. Students were not impacted by not having athletics, and the majority of students attended zero athletic events. In addition, the results from the Bring Back Athletics Group survey were not too different since the majority of students had very similar outcomes. I also want to communicate the urgency shared amongst the majority of students. We are concerned that if athletics were to come back, student organizations and clubs would be affected since the student activity fee would now have to be split to once again cover the cost and expenses of athletics. This, in short, could potentially rob certain students of scholarship and leadership opportunities, which may discourage student involvement. Students would not bring back athletics at the cost of these events, services. I would like to recommend that we, as students, are allowed to work with administration to create a student fee adversary committee under the Texas Education Code 54.5031. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cantu. The next person I have is Selena Rubio. Chair recognizes Ms. Cynthia Mahrez in attendance.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Selena Rubio, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak out on this issue about the reinstatement regarding LC sports. I am a proud alumni from LC. I was part of the very first softball organization back in 2014. Now, for me, I am the oldest of five, and though my family was not financially able to support me, to come and attend this school, or any school in general, that wasn't in the books for me. College wasn't in my plan. I was looking forward to getting a job in order to pay for my classes, find transportation. It's just, it's emotional, it's emotional to me because a lot of us don't have the opportunity to go out of state. A lot of us don't have the opportunity, you know, to get even the chance to continue sports after high school. I grew up playing from the very age of six. Softball wasn't as advanced as it is now, and I can assure you, as being a softball coach for high school or since I was 16 in Little League, I can assure you that the sports are growing. And it's not just softball. It's everywhere. It's in baseball, it's in tennis, it's in soccer. These children, they're all growing up talented, and they are expressing themselves through sports. They play a huge role in their upbringing because it gives them something to look forward to, something to work towards. Now, we bring in the question of academics with athletics. I can assure you, and it might be biased, but being a student athlete is far from anything being easy. We are, we have to get, we always hear the, "You don't pass, you don't play." We have to make sure we stay on top of our grades in order to be able to perform in athletics. Therefore, we dedicate our time towards our academics in the sense that we want to have the highest grades possible in order to play. Now, COVID came, and it impacted everybody severely in the sense that things were all getting shut down. People were hearing no left and right. There weren't, there couldn't be any practices. We couldn't get together. Things were all shut down. And we were, we weren't sure whether the chance of getting to compete again was going to be made available to us. But now that things are turning around for the better, in a sense, people are getting vaccinated. There are still precautions being enforced. Masks are still being regulated. They told us to hold on to the chance of hope that maybe we can get back on the field. And now I see people supporting the Houston Astros, supporting Cowboys, supporting other people. Why can't we start with that support with our community, with Laredo? That's where it all starts. What do kids have, if not their dreams of their future? I'm going to finish with saying, well, asking that you please highly reconsider this decision because you are not only affecting, you're not only depriving a sole organization or a sole group of kids, but the many gifted, talented people that are outside right now, your very window right now, that look forward to attending your institute in hopes that they can one day achieve their education, receive their education, as well as partake in sports that not only represent them, their families, this community, but our city of Laredo. We need to represent our, we need to show them that we are supportive of them and their dreams and need them to stay motivated, to be better. And who are we to tell them that they can't reach that success here and push them towards greater? Because that's what LC is. It's a stepping stone to push them to a brighter future for them, for them to reach that success that they are aspiring. And sports, though there may not be a degree in softball, though there may not be a degree in baseball, I can attest that we have had previous alumni. I can attest that we have had previous alumni that are all either doctors, military service people, educators for our community that are giving back by being coaches, physical therapists. All of these people started here at LC. And we can only imagine how many more can persevere if we keep those opportunities open to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubio. That's all we have for public testimony. The next item is discussion and possible action. It's for a discussion and possible action relating to the status of the Laredo College Athletics Program, including but not limited to disbanding the program or reinstating some or all of the sports in the program. Possible closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Do we have any discussion or any questions? Do we have a motion?
Are we going to, because I did have a question since I know council wanted to touch on some legal issues pertaining Title IX? Are we going to go to executive session for this item so we're going to have a public discussion?
It all depends on the motion that's going to be made. I don't have a motion yet.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to reinstate athletics. Is that what you're asking?
The discussion and possible action, it's either to disband or reinstate the sports program. Disbanding of the program or reinstating some or all the sports in the program. Or we can go to executive session if we need to discuss further. Chair calls Mr. Muir.
Madam President, Board members, Rusty Muir for the record. The legal issue to address would depend on action that the board might take regarding this particular item, but it would involve a Title IX discussion. And so depending on the action the board is considering taking, Title IX may or may not be implicated. The board could have a discussion if somebody makes a motion and it's seconded. And alternatively, you could decide to receive some legal advice on Title IX issues prior to making a motion. That's up to the board.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Marius.
Yes. Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I'm not going to prolong discussion. We already, I commend administration for all the time that they devoted to our workshop. We had extensive discussion pertaining this matter. I appreciate all of the time that you all allocated for this research. I know, I want to thank Ms. Ramos too for hosting the committee. Extensive research has been done and I hope that we do not prolong this meeting any longer as we have discussed any possible fact or opinions. We have entertained both sides. And one thing in terms of the public comments that we heard tonight, and I know we're under a different administration, this necessarily doesn't reflect on our current precedent, but it is unfortunate to hear internal deficiencies in terms of weak software programs, lack of computers and being understaffed. So I do not blame our current administration on the list. I did not hear any party talk about proper program evaluation and I think that's important for everyone to do it regardless of the nature of the program. And I feel that at this time, this was not done through athletics, not under this current administration because I know Dr. Maricela has worked very diligently since her appointment. And if I remember correctly, there were three particular options that were introduced by administration during the workshop. One was eliminated athletics. The second motion was to, the second option was to bring the sports that we currently have coaches for, which is softball, soccer and women's and male's tennis. And with those particular items in which was going to be the removal of all scholarships, the no scholarships, all 100% local and coaches maintaining their own fields and that no travel funds, if I'm not mistaken?
No housing.
If I may.
No dorms. Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Just to quickly answer, Ms. Trustee Elizondo, it's the conditions that were placed were no scholarships, no housing, no recruitment travel, recruit 100% of local students, requiring coaches to maintain fields and conduct other duties. And the last one was divisional status change will be made.
And then that there one is to reinstate athletics completely, right? With the same conditions as option two?
Chair recognizes Dr. Teherina. Sorry?
His little hand is off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza. I didn't see your hand, sir.
You don't make it quick. You know, we cut out scholarships, we cut out travel, we cut out all this, then we don't need sports. Because sports without all these things, these kids cannot play, they cannot travel. You can't travel, who are they going to play, the high school kids? High schools are going to play, basically that's what it amounts to. So it is kind of difficult, this situation. So I just want to remind you, all of you, you know, when you put those type of restrictions in there, you don't need sports, there's no way.
Chair recognizes Dr. Teherina and then Mrs. Ramos.
Dr. Teherina, interim president, so I'll just sum it up. We presented at the board workshop three options. The only one, just as a reminder, that administration supports is option one, which is to disband athletics. We are not, we're not saying that we don't believe in the concept of athletic programming. We absolutely do, but our finances are the problem. We just came back from a Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. They said to factor in anywhere from 4% to 7% of inflation for next year's budgets. We have consistently vacated almost $2 million in positions. Every year, we grow tighter and tighter with our budgets, which is why we're here. You know, state appropriations, we've gone to Austin. Money's not coming in for community colleges because we are able to tax our community. But what they don't or need to be reminded is that we taxed by city base, not county base. And we serve multiple counties, which of course we advocate for education. That's what we're here for, that is our mission. So to sum up, there's a lot of challenges on the finances, things coming our way, technology, more hybrid and online. As much as we want our students to be on campus, that is not the enrollment, not only for Laredo College, but for the state, for the national enrollment. I don't know what to tell you other than things are changing. We talked about fast-paced certifications, fast-paced bachelor's degree, competence-based design, more technology, more innovation, and all of that requires a lot of money. So when we present this difficult topic, it's not to pick on athletics. It's just that we have to secure the future of the college with all these crazy trends that are coming, whether we like it or not, as far as where the direction higher ed and particular community colleges are going. So with option one, it does not affect our future budgets in regards to having to add additional, I hate to call it, but a non-essential program to many essential programs and services that we have to obtain. We don't want to go to a point where we have to jeopardize our essential programs and services at the mercy of athletic programming. And so this is why option one was, option one would not implicate any Title IX concerns. If we want to discuss option two and three, I would highly recommend that the board go into executive session to discuss those matters as far as partially. But option two, we presented, which would be to partially reinstate some programs, but with conditions. And I agree with Dr. Carranza, when you add conditions, you're not providing the valuable resources that a program needs. And most importantly, when we reinstate programs like athletics, we're making a commitment to students. And if next year budget doesn't work out in our favor, guess what? We've already made that commitment to the students. And that's where we don't want to go in regards to, we make a commitment to student and then we have to value those two years of that commitment on a very highly costly program. So I suggest that if we are opening up the room for discussion on option two or three, that we go into executive session to discuss those matters.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
First of all, I want to commend not only administration, but I also want to take an opportunity to commend Ms. Elizondo because her conviction and her tenacity to bring back something that she regards as really important to her and to the community as well, right, is important. But I think the important message here is, hear them out. Bring back sports. That's the question, bring back sports or not? That's the yes or no. It's not anything else in between. So if we decide as a board, we decide collectively. So right now, if, let's say for example, you have an overwhelming amount of support to bring back the sports, those individuals that vote against bringing it back still have a responsibility collectively. As a board, we're all responsible, no matter what happens. Because even if those five individuals or more than five decide to vote for a particular motion, whoever brings it forward, the rest of the individuals that voted against it or for it or so forth, collectively, all nine of us are responsible. We're going to have to be there, standing, standing hand to hand, face to face, facing our community, facing our college, facing our staff, facing our students. Those students right now, the students of the future, right? And so we need to make sure that we understand how important it is that we have an opportunity to make a decision that's going to impact. Just because I might be on the other side, I don't know which side I'm in right now because I haven't made a decision yet, but whatever side I'm in, I'm going to hold hands with those individuals that vote for or against. As a board, that's what we're all here for, right? We have to respond to the community. And I just want to tell you that I firmly believe that the administration has a point and a purpose in mind. Otherwise, you are the guides, you are the ones that are providing us with a guide. You're providing us with advice and what we decide, maybe it might be contrary to what you all have given us advice, then we need to stand together as a board and make that decision and stand firm that we are going to be able to face our community and be able to face our students, whether they're future students or, you know, students that came here before. And I honestly think that our sports program needs adequate dorms, booster club support, local community talent and a lot of funding to excel along with good grades from the students and dedication from the staff. If anything, we should provide administration with what the guidance we need to do. What do we decide, yes or no? And base it up on there. I think that we can vote to reinstate sports and instruct administration to determine which sports to return and you all work out the logistics. The board needs to decide whether we want to move forward or not. But I really feel that we have to have trust and support for administration and we have to heed their advice. And collectively as this board, as I am standing before you, with you, I support those individuals that are next to me as my colleagues. So I will support what the group decides to do, whether I vote for it or against it. But I wanted to make sure that clarification is made, that I'm going to stand with them, whatever the decision comes about. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel and then Ms. Elizondo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Very well said by Ms. Ramos, that is very, very true. We are Laredo College Board of Trustees and I think it's very important that if we vote for whoever does not want to, you know, we still have to back, you know, if sports does return, you know, for trustees that might not want to, we have to be behind our athletic program if it does pass, no matter what. And I think you just made a huge point, Dr. Maricela, Teherina, that what you said is we can cripple the department before it even starts. And if we put conditions, you know, to be able to say, "You can't do this, you can't do that, you're going to have to do this," we're already starting on the wrong foot. So I think that is another key element that we have to, we have to also consider. You know, that we cannot send, I'll say it in Spanish, "Te mandan a guerra con palos y piedras." You're never going to make it, you know, so it's very, very true. You know, so that's something that we have to collectively as a board, we also have to consider that. And I am also going to go with Dr. Teherina on this, that if we're going to, we're going to talk about any other option, I think we should also go to the back because, to executive session, because we are going to be talking about individuals and individual personnels that are affected with this, you know, if it's a yes or a no. I think it's very important and I would rather go to executive session to even discuss anything pertaining to an individual employee. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I honestly think that, yeah, we need to be physically responsible and we also need to hear to the needs of the community. And I also, as an administrator, I understand that there are certain things that us as a government body should not have jurisdiction on. So I am committed to work with administration and I do understand that things are not 100% how they used to be. Nonetheless, we need to both work together in order to be able to at least do baby steps. And the rest of the logistics, I think that they should be governed by administration. And I think our aspect or our side, it's the funding, right? And whether we want to reinstate athletics or not. And I have said it before, my commitment is also to athletics. I am willing to compromise to allow some of the sports to come back. In terms of which sports should come back, I think it's something that should be addressed by administration in terms, allow our president to talk to our legal counsel, decide which one is better. Not which one's better, because they're all equally important, but at this point, which ones will be more feasible and easier to reinstate. As you all know, we currently only have three coaches on board. So I think that, in my personal opinion, I think those will be the easiest to get started now and as opposed to the entire one. So I am committed to working with administration and I think that, and I agree with you, maybe it's not feasible at this time to bring all of them. So, and I agree also with Carranza and with Rangel. And I mean, with certain conditions, we are setting them to fail. And our whole objective to bring them back is so they can be able to participate and compete. So they won't be able to compete with those conditions. But I mean, that's something that administration needs to decide as a subject matter expert. And in terms of funding, I think that's where we need to make the decision to either bring them back or not and then you guys work on the logistics.
Chair recognizes Ms. Marius.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, just real quick, I just wanted to also echo and underscore Mrs. Ramos's comments because tonight is no different from any other difficult agenda item that we have faced in the past. And we have been split many a times, you know, and yet, at the end of the day, it's all about this institution. It's not about us. We gave our opinion, we gave our best feedback of what our community has been telling us, but we may not always rise to the top as winners. But yet, yes, you have to conform and move along and I think that is a scenario here tonight. It is difficult, but I think we've narrowed the scope and I'm glad to hear Ms. Elizondo now, you know, saying that we do need to work together, no matter what. It's just a matter of finding out which is that focal point that we need to put our attention on. All along, when we started this whole discussion, you know, and I think I had mentioned it all All along, uh, when we started this whole discussion, you know, and I think I had mentioned it already, that when we're in the ad hoc committee, we had discussed, and we closed that ad hoc committee by saying, let's bring it back, maybe in December, maybe in January, and see how the finances are, and then start working out a plan. Obviously, things were precipitated and all, so it forced us into this corner that we're in now. But I think there's still, you know, time to, and we've had enough time to, to evaluate and reflect and now try to decide, you know, our best way out of this, whether it's one program, two programs. And I've always said, let's take our baby steps, you know, because we, I understand the finances. I understand and it's difficult. So you're at a tug of war internally and I'm at a crossroad and, but I have to think of what's in the best interest of this institution. Yes, you have all those youngsters out there that want the sports. I had even talked about intramurals and we discussed that. Years back, that's all there was, intramurals. We didn't have scholarships or anything and everybody was happy-go-lucky. I mean, maybe we come, come to some kind of, you know, a medium, but again, hopefully that we go back there and discuss and come back and, and come back with a plan. And as Ms. Elizondo alluded to, that administration, you know, have to help us a little bit more. Because I've always said, we had black and white, but there was no gray area. And I wanted to see what other gray areas were out there, if, if any. And if not, well, it's okay. But anyway, so that's my two cents worth, Madam Chair. Thank you. And with that, I wanted to say, I wanted to make the motion to go into executive session.
So I have a first and a second to go into executive session. Yes, we still have one motion on the table.
You want to defer, you want to rescind it? And so we can go to executive session?
Uh, can I rescind the motion? But I want to make another.
We can't have too many motions going on. Are you going to rescind the motion or are you going to keep it?
We'll be brief, we promise. We'll be brief, we promise.
So did you, did, Ms. Elizondo?
She called to go to executive session.
But the point of order, the point of order was that she hadn't originally started with a motion. Of course, she tried to say what's going on and she didn't get a second, so that died. So now this motion's on the floor, first and a second.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mure. There's too many things happening on the table.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, if Ms. Elizondo's motion did not get a second, then it's not on the table.
Okay, so she did not get a second.
And I think if you do have a motion to go into executive session and there's a second, you can vote on that. However, I would encourage you to specify to go into executive session under items 4A and 4B.
Yes.
Because they are related and there's both. So for 4A, the exception would be 551.071. And then 4B would be 551.071 and 551.071.
I so amend my motion to so stipulate.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you raise your hands, please? Who's in favor going to executive session? One, two, three, four.
Everybody.
Five, six. Okay. So executive set, I can't guarantee that, Mr. Dr. Carranza. Executive session at this time, I'm going to recommend we go into executive session. The time now is 6:53 PM and the board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to sections uh, 551 dot 071 and 551 dot 071 and 551 dot 074. Thank you. Reconvene from closed session. The time is now 7:38 PM. And the board, the board took no action. Executive session will take appropriate action on items. If necessary, discuss in closed session. So the item that we have is 4A, discussion and possible action relating to the status of the Laredo College Athletics Program, including but not limited to disbanding the program or reinstating some or all of the sports on the program. Possible closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551 dot 071. I have a motion to make to go ahead and disband the Laredo College Athletics Program. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a second by Ms. Vella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have one, two, three. Yes, no? No. So just me and Ms. Vella. So motion doesn't pass. Do I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to reinstate some of the athletic programs effective 2022 and 2023 and to direct administration to present an implementation plan.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Can it be amended before I have a second?
No, you have to have a second first.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second by Mr. Martinez? Now it can be amended?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the motion to analyze the relevant issues pertaining to the athletic, to some of the athletic programs.
Somebody would have to second that motion and vote on that one.
Do I have a second on that amended? So I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
For the amendment. Just for the amendment.
Just for the amendment?
Right.
One, two, four, five, six.
That passes.
So it passes.
Now, now you can vote on the motion.
Okay, so now we have Ms. Elizondo's uh, motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. We have 4B, discussion and possible personnel action related to Laredo College Athletics Program. Employees, possible closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551 dot 071 and 551 dot 074. I make a motion to go ahead and table this item.
Second.
So I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item I have is, next meeting date is Tuesday, December 21st, 6 PM, regular Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Yes.
Can we do away with that meeting for Christmas?
No, sir.
I second.
Me too.
There was a second, but we have a lot of items that need to be taken care of before the end of the year.
Can we zoom it?
So I have a motion by Dr. Carranza and I have a second by Mr. Delgado to adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.